I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Brickline Select Board for December 16th, 2020. The time is 6:30 PM. First up is review changes to the agenda, if any. The only real change that I would make is just to indicate that Archie Clark is not going to be joining us tonight. He's getting ready to go out and plow, but he and I had a conversation and so I'm pretty much up to speed on all his thoughts on the budget when we get to that later. Any changes to the agenda for you, Gwen?
No.
Joseph, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Shelby, any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Then moving on to scheduled members of the public, David Parker is here with us on Zoom. Hi, David. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, David. Glad to be here.
I will just recap that in addition to David, I and Guy Tans are here physically in the office. And then on the Zoom call are Gwen, Tanza, Joseph Dutton, Shelby Brimmer, and also the folks from Fact TV. Peter Barris, our recording clerk, is not going to be on the call tonight because he has a conflict with the school, but he will do the transcription as he often does from the audio and video if necessary. So that's everybody who's around, unscheduled members of the public. There's no unscheduled member physically in the office. There's also no one online or on the phone who is an unscheduled member of the public. So we'll move right to approving the minutes. First up is the minutes from the December 2 regular meeting. I'll just note that I have a few little typos on the first page cited instead of sightee. A few little redundant words here and there, but nothing of substance. And then on the second page, the only thing I really had was removing the W from the end of Mr. Mello's name again. So just a few minor typographical issues on the first page and not much of anything on the second page. Gwen, did you have additional changes to the minutes from December 2nd?
No.
Joseph, any additional changes to the minutes from December 2nd?
No.
Shelby, any changes to the minutes from December 2nd?
Nope.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 2nd as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joseph. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from December 2nd as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So the minutes from December 2nd are approved. Next up is the minutes from the December 9th special meeting. I didn't have any changes to those because I did them and I think everything I do is perfect. Gwen, did you have any changes to the minutes from December 9th?
No, and you are perfect.
Thank you. I wasn't fishing for that whatsoever. Joseph, any changes to the December 9th minutes?
No.
Shelby, any changes to the December 9th minutes?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 9th as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
Is when it says submitted December 10th, is that because you submitted it then or is that a? Okay. My bad.
Which we, I, no, it's okay. I do that largely because Peter does that. I don't know that we, you know, I don't think we technically really have to, but he likes to put the date that he actually produced the minutes at the bottom of it. So I did the same thing, but very well. So sorry, I made a motion to approve these as presented. Was there a second to that motion?
A second.
Gwen, seconded by Gwen. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes from December 9th as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Those are also approved. Okay. We're flying right along. Next up is the new business and the first item is what I've called Consider Australian Ballot for 2021 Town Meeting. We're still, I suppose, at the point of discussing whether that completely makes sense to do. But I think based on our conversation last time, I think there was general consensus among us that we thought that would make sense. We asked David Parker to join us, you know, as our town, usual town moderator for town meeting and also former select board member and longtime town resident. Dave, I know you had mentioned that, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I, but I did see that it came through that Deb Luskin wrote up some points and wrote a letter to the New Fane Select Board, I think, supporting the idea of voting entirely by Australian ballot and perhaps laying out some thought process on this. I guess I'll just open it up to you first to just sort of say, what's your view on holding town meeting as via an Australian ballot, especially in light of what the other options may be? What's your thinking? And feel free to channel Deb's thinking as much as you want as well.
I hadn't, oh, I had been wondering about this just in terms of my own situation and, you know, and then more widely to the town of how we were going to deal with this. And I don't want to be wasting your time here either, but the letter from Deb Luskin that I sent you is really a nice concise layout of the three options that seem to be available to towns. You're correct in saying that her letter, this was a letter she wrote to the New Fane Select Board and handed to them on, I think they're December 7th meeting. And she is in favor of the Australian ballot. Evidently the legislature has, and I don't know, stop me if I'm telling you things you already know and, you know. The legislature, I guess, has made provisions for this under Act 162. This is for a temporary use of the Australian ballot for 2021. And things would revert back to normal in 2022. Gosh, I wish I had her letter printed out right here in front of me. She talks about the procedure that the town has to go through. There needs to be an informational meeting, I think, that has to occur at least 10 days before town meeting.
It may give people the ability to do is to mail ballots to all registered, active registered voters. I'll highlight the fact that they're not going to fund any of that. So all of the expense of that would be on us if we were to do that. And given the timing, it would be a pretty dicey thing to probably pull together in a short period of time. And then the sort of third catchall that they note is granting the Secretary of State the same authority that was granted last year to authorize alternative procedures for local elections in 2021, which one of the examples they give is drive up polling places. So those, those points, I'm going to go ahead and say at the moment, don't necessarily do a whole lot potentially to help our situation, even if they would come into play. But to highlight a couple of other things to, again, to echo some of Dave's points. People, people who want to be on the ballot for candidates for office, there's no longer a requirement that they submit a, that they get signatures. However, there is still the requirement that they file a consent of candidate form. And it's an interesting point to make that the consent of candidate form has to be filed no later than the sixth Monday before the election, which in our case, because remember, we voted to change our town meeting to Monday. In our case, that means consent of candidate forms for any position would have to be submitted by January 18th. Just so we have that a little bit in the back of our heads, not that we have to worry about the timing of that now, but it is because of our town meeting. If we were in another town that still had a town meeting on Tuesday, people would have one more week in order to do that. But another point going through is that, yeah, they highlight that they're not able to pay postage or anything, any of the mailing costs associated with that. So the municipality would be responsible for it. The candidates must file the consent form by Jan, in our case, January 18th. The ballots will contain the articles to be voted on as they are listed in the warning. Ballots must be prepared no later than 20 days before the election. You may prepare the ballot in-house if you choose. In our case, that means by February 9th, we would have to have the ballots prepared for this. Voters can request a ballot be sent to them. They can pick it up or they can vote in person. And to Dave's point, an informational meeting must be held by the legislative body ourselves within the 10 days prior to the meeting. And under the current temporary restriction, temporary rules that are in place, we could do that and would do that via Zoom or some electronic means. But that basically means that the informational meeting would happen sometime between February 19th and February 28th. And there must be a polling place and the polling place can be open anytime between 5:00 and 10:00 AM and must close at 7:00 PM. My assumption would be we would do nine to seven voting here like we do in every other election. So those are points that were made and sent out by the Secretary of State's office. Just to dovetail on that a little bit. We separately received some requests for input, potential input from our representatives Carolyn Partridge and Leslie Goldman. Also noting that the legislator is attempting to make fast work of the beginning of January and pass some legislation, but they also highlight the same things that I just noted, that primarily it would be moving town meeting. We may get the ability to move town meeting to a different time. I don't want to speak for everyone here, but let's go around and just pull them out. I personally, knowing what I know right now, the idea of moving town meeting doesn't seem like anything that is helpful to me in the situation. Gwen, what's, what's your thinking about the prospect of potentially being able to move town meeting to a different date?
I don't think it sounds potential.
Joseph, what's your feeling about that idea?
Yeah, I agree. And I don't see how it's going to help us at all and it in itself may create a bit of a debacle moving it. So I don't think it's much worth looking into.
Shelby, what's your thinking about that?
Uh, same. I mean, and especially if we do Australian ballot or any kind of, I mean, not that I expect the budget to be voted down, but I feel like if we just pushing the date or, you know, anything later. I mean, it just gives us less time to react if there are any issues or there's something that comes up that we have to handle still prior to the start of the new budget year. So.
That's an excellent point. Yeah. I hadn't, I hadn't thought of it in those terms, but that's a really, really good point. Dave, I guess I'd ask you also, what's, I mean, do you, do you think the idea of moving town meeting is something that's worth contemplating?
No, I agree with you. I, I think you hit the nail on the head there. I don't see an advantage to it and I would think it might make it more difficult for you to be setting your, your school tax rate and those things that happen in May. Whether they'll happen in May this year, I don't know, but yeah, I don't think there's an advantage to doing that.
So my, my view at the moment, and I guess I'll just go around and quickly, let's ask this again. I think we, personally, I think we should go ahead and move and vote to hold town meeting by Australian ballot, but that's, that's where I'm at. I'm certainly happy for there to be. We can certainly discuss it further in the context of a motion. But before we get too far down it, I mean, Gwen, do you still think it makes sense for us to take that action tonight?
Yes.
Joseph, do you still agree that that makes sense to do tonight?
I do. Yeah. And I, I think that putting it off is just shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It just gives us less time to deal with what we have to deal with. I agree. Shelby, what do you, how do you feel?
Yeah, I'm still in favor of going Australian ballot and starting to plan for that.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we hold our 2021 town meeting by Australian ballot. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Shelby. Okay. We can discuss it further. If people have additional points to make, I don't know that I do personally, but does anybody else? I don't want to give, I want to give people an opportunity if they see fit. Anybody speak now if you want to discuss this further before we vote it. Going once, twice. It's tough not being able to look at people, engage their gestures for me to move on like you probably are doing at home. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of having our 2021 town meeting by Australian ballot signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Correct. That passes and we will begin the process of figuring out what that means. And I will say, while we're still on the subject for what that might mean, conveniently enough tomorrow, Guy forwarded this and people probably got it elsewhere. Tomorrow, there is apparently going to be a Voting by Australian Ballot, an overview webinar hosted by Will Sanning, the same person who sent us this, sent Guy this email. It's tomorrow, Thursday, December 17th from 2:00 to 3:30 PM. I will say I have no ability to attend that because I'll be working and I have a client call during the middle of it. Is there anyone who is available and interested in attending that webinar? I guess we have to pay for it. Either 20 bucks or 40 bucks, which obviously we'll figure that out. Or any, anybody on the board able to attend that webinar and interested in doing it?
I'm interested. I just have to wait and see if I'm remote tomorrow or not. If I'm remote tomorrow, I have flexibility to do that. If I'm in the office, I won't be able to because these people walk in, like I can't control that. So I was going to wait in the morning. I'll know pretty early if I can. But definitely I wouldn't count on me being the only one who could do it, but I'm definitely interested. So I'm going to wait and play it out in the morning and see what happens.
Okay. Anybody else available or interested in it?
I'm going to try.
Are you going to?
Yeah, as an election official.
Okay. That would be great if you're able to.
And I don't know, did it say anything in the webinar about them recording that webinar and showing?
Well, you know, they don't, but I.
Normally they do, but I just wanted to see if that was available.
I guess I'd like to think maybe they would, of course, because they're charging for it and they probably have to have that process of giving people access to it once they've paid. If you're able to attend it, Guy, that would be great. So are you pretty confident that you'll be able to?
What was the window?
2:00 to 3:30.
Right. I'm here in the office till 2:00. But yeah, I think I'm going to try to do that.
Okay. Cause what we want to avoid, I mean, well, relatively speaking, I think only one person needs to attend it. I don't think we need multiple.
Yeah, especially if we can potentially get a copy of the, you know, it's the recording or the slideshow after. We don't, yeah. So if Guy can do it, I'll just wait and see what comes out of it.
Why don't you ask Mr. Parker if he's available too? Because I think it's important that, you know, he can, given him the opportunity as moderator.
David, is this something that you're possibly available or and or interested in?
Gosh, this is my third Zoom meeting in the last 24 hours.
That's not bad.
It's, it's possible. I hadn't, I hadn't planned on it, but.
I guess I, I will say that I don't have a, I mean, the description such as it is, although I guess there's a link to a fuller description, which I haven't read. Providing an overview of legal requirements and the process of the Australian ballot system. I'll say I don't, I, I think it is perhaps more would be more significant for either someone from the select board or the election officials to be able to attend it than the moderator, strictly speaking. Cause I guess I'm not sure that I'm getting the sense that this will have a lot of relevance to a moderator who, I guess, no offense, but at this point, other than at the informational meeting, won't probably be doing anything this year.
I will make an attempt.
Okay, okay. The other thing I'll say is it's hard for me to believe that this will be the only time they will do this, given that they didn't give people a whole lot of warning for this and there's undoubtedly plenty of towns that still haven't decided if they're going to do it that way. So my guess is there will be other opportunities, even if, if Shelby or Guy isn't able to attend this tomorrow, I bet we'll have other chances. Or to Shelby's point, perhaps they'll make the link to the recording available to us after the fact, if we pay them their money.
I think, I think Guy had forwarded me the mailing on that. I had been looking at it. My take on it was that it was more geared toward actually sort of the things that you were laying out, David, the date deadlines for various stages of things that had to be done. I would imagine, I mean, the moderator has no role in that, nor even in the information meeting that you'll do beforehand. So I feel like I'm sort of dead weight as far as this goes.
Well, and it's also possible that, I mean, not that, you know, like we say, we, we have this email that Guy forwarded that lays out a bunch of stuff that is basically, my guess is going to be essentially the outline for this one and a half hour thing that the guy is going to do for VLCT since it is the same person, literally the same person. Okay. So let's, let's, we'll say for the moment that between Shelby and Guy, we're hopeful that maybe one of them is able to attend if possible. If not, we'll look for perhaps an opportunity to attend it. Ten, something like that at a later point, but I feel a little, I pulled down also from VLCT, a few different things about Australian ballots and you know, I think a big thing, and I know I mentioned this last time, is at some point if we are aware of, and I, the thing is, I'm not sure that we, you know, it would be good for us to be able to get from some neighboring towns to at least have done part of their, like New Fane, who at least have done, and I guess whatever, we can pull a New Fane Town Report probably and find some of this, that what the, what the structure of their warning and ballot normally looks like is all, I mean, just, you know, I mean.
Part Australian and part for.
Right. But they at least have been voting all of their, a bunch of their town positions by Australian ballot unlike us. I mean, my assumption is that the articles are pretty much just, you know, and what happens with multiple, multiple people who are nominated.
They're on the ballot.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So we literally, do we, do we, do we, you know, essentially format it like it's a ballot for, you know, a presidential election or another election and. Okay, okay. So you've already, you've, you've started a little bit of the process of that. That's awesome. That's great. That's super helpful.
And basically they, they go out just like a general election and they put up signs and, you know, it's kind of strange. It's a little awkward for us because we've never done it.
Right, exactly. But we'll figure it out, I guess. Okay. Unless anybody else has any last thoughts, I think we'll move on from this. David, thank you very much for joining us.
My pleasure.
Your efforts. We appreciate that.
Well, I thank all of you for everything you do for the town. So.
By the way, this is Gwen. You're not dead weight ever.
Often. You should talk to my wife.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Dave. Have a good, enjoy the snow. Okay. Moving on to 6B meeting conduct. Shelby, you had, I think this was your thinking to put this on and have a discussion and see whether we, I don't know, whether we adopt something or adapt something. What's your, what's your thinking about it now?
Um, I think that it's a conversation we need to have in the full boards here and I didn't have as much time as I thought.
I'm sorry. Could you say that? Yeah. Could you start over with that though? Like you cut out a little bit.
Um, I just, I think we need to have the conversation in the full boards there. Um, or here, wherever we are. And I also, I, I didn't end up having as much time between this, one week instead of two feels really fast. So I haven't really had a chance to structure anything too much. And I, I think that with this conversation, we do need to have some structure to it. So it doesn't get out of hand. So I, I'm happy to table this until the next meeting or even the one after that. So I can pull some stuff together and kind of have a way to approach it. And also then we can all be here for it.
Okay. I'll, I'll note that I did a little bit of looking around and I really didn't find, I didn't, I was looking for some potential, you know, example or on VLCT or, or something like that. What I did find, and I can point you to where this is on VL, well, or on VLCT's website, they have a model rules of procedure. And our rules of procedure that we use, that we adopt every year seems to be adapted from that or adapted from a previous version of it perhaps. But it's, it's missing or ours does not include a lot of what theirs includes. And I will say, and I'll just read it quickly, not that we're going to decide anything, but just as some food for thought. They do have a paragraph in their model rules of procedure that says, "Order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting. Neither members of the body nor the members of the public shall delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the meeting or interrupt or disturb any member while speaking. Members of the body and members of the public are prohibited from making personal, impertinent, threatening or profane remarks." I'll just throw out that I could think it might not be a bad idea for this or something like this to be something that was incorporated into our rules of procedure. But that's, that's a larger discussion that we can have to Shelby's point when everybody is present. Shelby, I guess what I'd say, so our, just to not to, though it's not really this time. Shelby, I guess what I'd say, so our, just to not to, though it's not really this topic exactly, but just to, to highlight a few things for people. So, you know, we obviously, unless we're gonna warn special meetings, we have two meetings in January. You know, our next meeting is going to be January sixth, because there's five weeks in December. So our next meeting will be January sixth, and then we have a meeting January twentieth. By the meeting on January twentieth, we absolutely positively will have to vote and approve our warning for town meeting, which presumably will be this ballot of a lot of articles. So everything we're doing with the budget and figuring out, getting people to nominate themselves or cajoling people into nominating themselves, all of that is gonna have to happen no later than January twentieth. And in fact, like I just pointed out, people who nominate, who are gonna be nominated for any of the positions, are gonna have to actually do that by January eighteenth. So I'm just floating it out there that, uh, and, and I guess to the point of the meeting conduct, depending on how super urgent anyone might feel this is, I wouldn't mind if we tabled this until the first meeting in February.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Because our time, I think, is going to be pretty short on other things. So Shelby, you're okay with the idea of tabling this till whatever the first meeting in February is?
Yeah, I, I don't think it's a new issue, so I think it's fine to push it, and I think we need to prioritize till we're, till we're set.
Right. Joseph, how do you feel about that? Do you have any concerns about tabling this until then?
Well, I'd like to say a few things now, if, if that's okay. Yeah, so, um, I would agree with Shelby that the productivity of a discussion is a little bit lessened without the full board. But, uh, and I, I don't mean to try to speak, uh, when Bruce is not here to, um, reply, but I, I have no doubt that, uh, you know, this is all recorded, so he can see it. But, um, I, I'm not gonna try to circle around the issue. I, I think that, uh, well, we haven't been able to talk about this group because of the, uh, the open meeting laws, like you, uh, pointed out, the, uh, last meeting or whatever. But I have a problem specifically, and really only with the way Bruce conducts himself at certain times. And it's really only surrounding some issues. As I sort of, um, mentioned when we were talking a couple of meetings ago, I, I think in some of the, uh, the issues that Bruce is personally involved in, he gets a little heated up. And I think that he, he gets very carried away in a disrespectful manner. I think that he, he spends a long time spinning narratives that, uh, that we could at the very least do without. And at the worst, I, I think that they, they really undermine the credibility of, uh, of him, of the board. And, um, it, it's just, uh, disrespectful. And it's happened on, on multiple occasions. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but, um, you know, like when we, when we had the, the meeting about the windows and the vendor came, he was disrespectful to the vendor in person. But then, you know, like when we were talking about Jeffers, uh, I can guarantee, well, I don't mean to speak for anybody, but I can imagine that, that somebody would be upset the way that the narrative was being portrayed. So, so that's my number one concern.
Okay, so I, 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 I think it makes sense to stop at this point, though, and just, I wanna make one. I don't, I, I'm not trying to necessarily disagree with your points, or you certainly have the ability to, to say what you feel. I will say, however, I, I don't think, to Shelby's point, that we should have this kind of conversation without, uh, Bruce being able to be part of it. So I, I don't think it makes sense to continue without him having an opportunity to be part of the discussion. I'll say, you know, we have tabled many, many things in the past when members of the, when members of the board weren't in attendance so that they could be part of that discussion. So I don't think this really should be any different. I know that it might be an awkward and uncomfortable and bordering on, uh, whatever. It's gonna be an uncomfortable conversation, but I still don't see, and I went back and looked at all the statutes, uh, I still don't see any way that this unfortunately could qualify as, uh, a reason to go into executive session. That being said, there's also no preclusion of two board members outside of the context of a meeting having a discussion and discussing whatever they feel they might want to discuss. So.
Yeah.
Gwen, do you have a problem with tabling this until February? Gwen?
I'm trying to unmute. I, it would be discussed when all members are present.
Okay, because I guess, I, I guess part of the reason that I'll also say that it makes sense for this to be discussed when, I, I mean, other thing is, you know, I will say, I mean, I've read back through, like I just noted here, I've read back through our rules of procedure. There's nothing in our rules of procedure that necessarily preclude some of the comments that I think have bothered Joseph and myself, quite frankly, and others. So I, I will say for the, when we get to that discussion, that I do think we need to expand our rules of procedure or a code of conduct or something. Because the reality is, um, I as the chair cannot change the way people choose to speak. And there's a limit to how much I or any of the other members are going to be able to police certain things. But if we have wording and language in our, and though some, many of these things are things that I would argue shouldn't need to be written down, but if they are written down, they're a lot easier for us to enforce now and moving forward. So I'm gonna let myself have the last word on that.
Could I just, could I say something quick, David?
Uh, probably.
Yeah, because, and, and I apologize for rambling on, and, and it, it's not my intent to, uh,
I know.
Yeah, it's not my intent to try to pick out instances where I've been made angry. But my kind of point here is that I don't think that anyone, uh, Bruce or any of us ha, have, has violated any sort of, uh, uh, proper ways to engage ourselves. And I, I don't think that writing anything else into any rules i, is really gonna change, uh, the way that we act. So that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, is that I, I don't think that we need to modify, after reading our, um, whatever we wanna call them, the, uh, I'm blanking on what the.
Rules of procedure?
Yeah, the rules and procedures. I don't think that modifying the rules and procedures is, is really gonna solve the problem, because I don't think that anything procedurally has necessarily been done wrong. I think that this is kind of a, maybe it's a personal problem, but, um, may, and maybe I'm not alone here, but that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that it, we need to have this conversation as a board, because like you pointed out, we, we can't talk, um, more than two of us, uh, without having it publicized as it is here. But, um, I, I don't think that we need to write any sort of procedure. I think that we just need to, um, talk about the way that, um, well, that one person is acting. And that, and that's how I feel, and I'm not saying you all feel that way. But I just wanted to, to say to everybody, it, it's, that's, that's my problem. It's not the procedures, and I don't think the procedures will fix it. It's just, um, I think somebody's been being disrespectful.
Okay, so let's, um, let's table further discussion of this until the first meeting in February. But then, um, in, within the confines of open meeting law, Joseph lets you and I have a conversation after this.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so that's six B. Now moving on to old business. First up, a treasure update. So just to quickly give people an idea of some things that are going on. People will recall that a few meetings ago, we, um, we gave, uh, we gave, we obviously appointed Samara to be acting treasurer. Um, and we also, um, gave the treasurer, the prior treasurer, the go-ahead to hire a non-resident, uh, trained bookkeeper to serve as an assistant treasurer. Um, and we also were okay with the pay rate of that person being higher than what we normally would. Unfortunately, that person, after a little bit of training, has, has taken some other work and is now no longer going to be doing any work for us. So we're back to Samara still being acting treasurer. Mike Masters, who, um, has expressed some interest in getting involved in the treasurer's department, has been being trained and working as an assistant treasurer. Every, everything I've been told by both Mike and Samara is that that is going very well. Mike's picking up a lot of stuff very quickly. So they, along with Guy as an assistant treasurer, are pretty much our treasurer team at the moment. Some of our other former, well, some of our other assistant treasurers, like Dantini Nystrom and Marie Taversole, are no longer going to do any work as assistant treasurers, not that, because they both have other obligations, um, and they can't really devote the time to it. So they've both stepped down. That's pretty much where things are at. I will say that Samara is still working through the process of cleaning up, um, records from the end of the last fiscal year. But she's getting there, and I think, you know, things are moving in a positive direction. But, um, we will be probably pushing our statutory deadlines in order to get our financials done and, uh, town report produced and stuff like that. But that's okay, we'll, we'll do what we need to do to get it done. Anybody have any questions about the treasure situation? All right, then let's move on. Because Mr. Mellow is not here, we will skip right past our agenda item seven B of the building update, which brings us to, um, update reports. Mr. Tanza, what's going on with the town clerk?
Basically, we've been extremely busy in the office due to the sales and refinancing that's going on throughout the state. And, um, tomorrow during a prepar, I'm performing a wedding here in the office. We've been very busy, and it's, uh, people have gotten used to making appointments and coming in, and, uh, things are moving along very well.
Nice.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, as always. Uh, Mark is not here. I was thinking that he was maybe going to be, um, but he isn't. I did talk to him, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, at this point, especially now that the snow is gonna start flying, Mark's, Mark's Road Maintenance is touch wood, largely on pause, um, and Archie and the plowing will begin. So I don't really have anything from Mark, but I, my impression is that everything is pretty much fine. Sorry, I'm plugging in my laptop and I realized my cord is not long enough to reach it. Okay, all right, so we're flying through other stuff when nobody's here. Communications, uh, email, we talked about some of the emails that, um, we got in relation to town meeting. The only other email that I thought was of note was we all got an email from, um, John Fay, who is now the program manager at Solid Waste Management District. He is a gentleman who I've never met, because I pretty much don't go to those meetings anymore, even though I should. He sent an email that went out to all the member towns, basically saying that the Solid Waste Management District has gotten a grant, um, for, in a rural development program to assist communities with improving solid waste management. They lay out, Bob, the executive director, and John, that there are various things that potentially they could do to help member towns, uh, like possibly helping to design and print some improved signage or to help review services and costs, uh, towards potential changes, some other things. I guess I will say, if, though, though of course, whether they'll have the availability to do it is, remains to be seen. If the town voters do end up voting to continue recycling at the recycling station, then we might want to investigate whether there's more that the program people with the district or Bob, the executive director, might be able to do to help us with the recycling sites. They do have, you know, they have some of the same issues, though they're a much more closed and uh, protected site than ours. They might, they might have some ideas of how we could, uh, protect that site a little more effectively if we get to the point of needing to do that. So that was the only other real email that I think was relevant to us that we haven't already discussed. Physical mail, um, we got a check from the Northeast Regional Planning Commission for about twenty-five hundred dollars, which is a, our reimbursement for a grant, a grants and aid, um, grant that Mark completed just a couple of months ago. And so I'd, I'd have a shout out to Mark for having done a whole bunch of work on a few culverts out on Athens Road at the beginning of October, basically so that we could qualify for this grant, which we then, uh, put in the reimbursement quickly. And Jeff Nugent at Wyndham Regional was very helpful in coming out and looking at it on the last day possible and okaying our reimbursement. So we physically got the check for that, which is nice. Because we very easily could have not gotten any of that money. Then we also got something from the, uh, State of Vermont Agency of Transportation, which is a letter of, uh, basically saying that in, in previous years, the Agency of Transportation has mailed a certificate of highway mileage to us. Um, and then we fill it out and return it through physical mail. This is a letter letting them know that they're now going to be doing these, uh, moving forward. They're gonna be doing them electronically. So they will, in January, or I guess, yeah, they'll, yeah, they'll send us more details later. But they'll, they'll essentially email Guy's email address is the one that they have on account. And then we'll go through the process of filling out that certificate online rather than doing a physical one. Then we got something from Valley Cares, which is basically just a bulk solicitation for a donation from Valley Cares. And last but not least, we got a letter from Grattleboro Development Credit Corporation noting that their submissions process is open for projects to be included in their structure through March 1st. Okay, so that's, that's it for physical regular mail, which brings us to pay orders. First up is the payroll warrant, which I signed last week. Gwen, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Joseph, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
This is the December 9th one.
The December 9th one, yes.
How come Mark got such a huge sum all at once, just out of curiosity?
Mark tends to go lengthy periods of time without putting in a timesheet. And then, so I'm looking at the backup. Basically, Mark put in his hours from July 17th until... It's still going. It's quite a number of pages. Until December 2nd.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm just curious. I certainly trust Mark. Just curious why it was such a big amount.
Yeah, it's, it's something many of us have had conversations with Mark about over the years, about whether he could do it a little more. But it, and sometimes he does and sometimes he doesn't. So, yeah, basically, he, he put in essentially, whatever that is, five months of, five months of his timesheet at one go. So that's why it's so much money.
Well, at the end of the year, it's the same amount of money, so.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think, yeah, right. Yep, it's true. I mean, it's, doesn't change it, I suppose. Any other questions on it, Joseph?
No.
Okay. Shelby, any questions on the payroll warrant?
I don't know, questions?
Okay. Then I'd make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-77 dated December 9th, 2020 in the amount of $7,278.99. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joseph. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2020-77 dated December 9th, 2020 in the amount of $7,278.99 signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, then the payroll warrant is approved. Next up is the accounts payable warrant. Gwen, did you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
No.
Joseph, did you have any questions on the accounts payable warrants?
Well, I assume the obvious, big sum that, we mentioned that last week, that the paving didn't go through until now. Is that the case with that Arlington?
Yeah, so the, yeah, Samara went back and we, whether we actually got, that was for the milling, right? Whether we actually got the invoice and didn't pay it or never got the invoice in the first place is slightly unclear. But in any event, we didn't pay, we have not paid it previously. So we're, they contacted us and we have them resend the invoice, and now we're paying it.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions beyond that, Joseph?
No.
Shelby, any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
Just something, what is it that's classified? I'm sorry, I'm on my phone because my computer's being silly. So it's a little hard to see. But it looked like something was put down as seminars under office supply. It just seemed like a weird classification. So I just didn't know, because when we've been like reviewing the budget, I know it's helpful when things are actually assigned what they are, so we know how much we really spent. It's the line, New England Municipal Res. Yeah, and then it says office supplies, but then underneath it says seminars. So it's underneath seminars in the account.
That's the $31 that she took out?
Yeah.
For the blank tax bills. Yeah. I'll be honest, why it's under seminars, I have no idea. That.
Yeah, I was just curious. There's no real concern with the amount or anything.
Yeah, yeah. I will say that there's some training going on right now when they're producing these, and maybe that's something that got just assigned to the wrong account when the warrant was being produced. Yeah, I mean, like she's saying, it's not, it's no question about the amount or the validity of it, just how it's categorized.
I thought it was categorized as supplies.
Well, then the description of it is supplies, but the account is actually seminars. Any other questions beyond that, Shelby? Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant 2020-78 dated December 16th, 2020 in the amount of $29,049.23. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-78 dated December 16th, 2020 in the amount of $29,049.23 signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, the accounts payable warrant then is approved, which brings us to setting the agenda for the next meeting. We will, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say we're gonna continue our budget discussion. We're gonna have a town meeting slash ballot discussion of some kind. We will have the other normal things. I'm not sure that I can think of anything else that I want to put on an agenda at the moment other than those two things. Anything else you can think of at the moment for the agenda, Gwen? This will be January 6th.
No.
Joseph, anything else for the agenda at the moment?
No.
Shelby, anything else for the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So we'll leave it at that and try to keep it as lean as possible other than these things. Okay, which brings us to item number 13, lucky number 13, which is the continuation of budget planning. So a couple of things to note. Let me just get all my stuff out of the way. We, I sent around, so I plugged in the numbers that we talked about last time into the spreadsheet and sent everybody an updated version of it that is dated yesterday, the 15th. Does everybody have that?
Yeah.
I'm gonna assume we do unless you yell at me otherwise.
Got it.
A couple of things to note, just in case it wasn't obvious. So the very last column is just the difference from last year, whether it was, whether we decreased it or increased. And then down at the bottom, for the different categories we've gone through thus far. With what we've gone through thus far, I just sort of flagged where we are at as far as being above or below last year. So after we went through the revenues, we've increased the revenue by about $1,000, a little over $1,000, the revenue expectation. And then so far, with the numbers we've gone through and tweaked, we have increased the expenditure budget by about, by $768. Does that make sense to everybody? Any questions on that? Okay, before we dive back into the operations side, I will say that I had a conversation with Archie earlier tonight. He and I had a conversation a week ago, and I asked him to get with Mark and go through and just discuss the highway side of the budget as to whether there's anything either that they think we could be a little leaner on or anything that we needed to increase. They had their conversation and returned to say they believe that the highway, Fund II highway should be level funded from last year, that there should be no increases or decreases. So that's their take on it. Before I go ahead and, and I'll say that I'm fine with that, and I, I trust their view, and I think it makes sense. Before I, we're not gonna go through and discuss all of those things tonight, and maybe we don't need to discuss all of those things. Does anybody have any concerns about level funding Fund II, which is the highway operations budget? Gwen, do you have any concerns about doing that?
That's the one on page four, right?
Yeah, well, it starts at the bottom of page three, sort of, but primarily page four, yes. So we would basically just budget the exact same numbers that we budgeted last year. So the bottom line would be identical to what it was last year if we did that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay with that. Joseph, do you have any concerns about handling it that way?
I just have a few, for the most part, no. I just had a few relatively general questions. Do you have any, well, so a lot of the stuff in here is we budget more than what we need because the fund rolls over and then we just use it for big projects, correct? That's kind of the wave top of the Fund II?
Well, yes, I mean, I suppose to some degree, yes.
I mean, because I, you know, if I'm looking, like summer construction, service, and equipment, we budget $39,000, we only spend $27,000.
Right, so here's a, here's a very important point for me to make, though, that I may have made before, but, and apologies for not making it again now. The numbers that are plugged into this right now are by no means final by any stretch of the imagination. There was a lot of miscategorization of last fiscal year's numbers as far as what accounts they were assigned to. Samara is still in the process of going through and reconciling all of that and making sure that things went in the category that they should have gone in. So the operation, the Fund I numbers that we see, she has a high degree of confidence in. The Fund II numbers that we currently have, she has a very low degree of confidence in. Now, that isn't to say that when everything's finished, we might not see that summer contract services was well below what we budgeted. But that is not necessarily the case, given the state of the numbers right now. The other thing I will say is that we do see from year to year a good deal of variation, to your point, because the approach has typically been that we budget this, and since the highway is able to roll over money from year to year, you know, one year Mark may do a whole bunch of culverts, and the next year he may not do any or very few. So it fluctuates from year to year in a way that we wouldn't be able to do, we wouldn't want to do in the other fund. So does that semi-answer your question, Joseph?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, the big, to get, working towards my point, the big thing with Fund II is that we generally try to over-budget. So because it rolls over and then we can spend it on large projects, correct?
I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's exactly the characterization. I don't know that people would, and again, this is, it's, it's, we shouldn't, we shouldn't get into a lengthy discussion about it because I'm not the road commissioner or the road supervisor, and I don't want to speak for them on where, how, why they might be comfortable with budgeted numbers. But I think the reason that we are potentially having numbers that we're not seeing actuals from a year or two is that there may be, there are often years when we do exceed that budgeted number. We do also, it is true, have some scenarios that are grant-related that we have not budgeted for in the past, where some of this rolling balance comes in handy, like the fact that we're gonna eventually have to come up with another $30,000 for the salt sand shed, and we obviously haven't budgeted any money for that. But because we've likely run a surplus in some of these highway categories, we will have that money available to be able to do that. So you're, I, I don't, I understand your point, but I'm not sure they would describe it exactly that way.
Okay, that, no, that, that makes sense. And, yeah, I, maybe saying that we over-budget to save money is a kind of a mischaracterization. But I guess what I was sort of just trying to float, just kind of brainstorming here, is that if we, as you pointed out, we're going to, the budget overall is almost definitely going to increase this year. And if we, not to try to sound completely political about this, but I think especially in a year like this, people would be very happy if the budget didn't go up at all. And so I was just kind of thinking ahead. If the overall budget only comes in, you know, a couple thousand or less over budget, is there any way that we could dip into the highway fund and just tweak a few numbers without, you know, you know, in a way that wouldn't hurt us at all, but would kind of just make everyone a lot happier with the way things are going and just kind of try to move forward smoothly and frugally, especially in a year like this?
I mean, I guess I'll say we could, but I think, but we'll, you know, we'll, we'll need to have a larger discussion about that. And I wouldn't feel right having, I personally wouldn't feel right making any of those decisions without at least giving Mark and Archie the chance to be part of that discussion.
Oh, not at all. And I certainly didn't say that we should, you know, even
Oh, yeah, right.
Look at that tonight. I was just saying, that would be my only thought of not level funding it is if. level funding it, is if, you know, if we're only nine hundred dollars over-budget, is, you know, then we could maybe consult Archie and Mark and look at it together and say, hey, you know, if we just steal nine hundred dollars from this fund, it might make, it might, it just might make, uh, it might be a good move, but.
I, I can see that point. Shelby, I guess, just so we don't dwell too long on it. Shelby, what's your feeling about potentially just level funding the highway fund?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if they think that's gonna do the trick, I think that that would be a good idea. I kind of defer to them on this. I, I'm, I'm not sure that there aren't certain areas that maybe we could be tweaking, but I think that in this given year, like, going line item by line item to tweak up or tweak down, you know, for small changes, maybe this isn't the year to do that. If they think that we can continue with a level-funded budget, I'm just, I think I'd be in support of that.
One other thing that I want to point out before we get back into discussing, so I think, I think let's, let's for the moment generally think we're probably going to level fund that, pending where we net out on the other side of things, and how we might feel once we see all of those numbers reflected. One thing I will point out, and that I think sometimes we lose track of a little bit, is, you know, last year, we did increase the budget by about forty-five hundred dollars from the prior year. However, we had a surplus of twenty-three thousand dollars from the previous fiscal year. So, the nets, and, and because we voted to return that money, basically, to defray the tax costs, people effectively had a lower tax bill than the prior year, and certainly not a higher one. Though, actually, within our budget, we did go up by several thousand dollars. So, we don't yet know where we may end up on the recently completed fiscal year, fiscal year twenty. Tensitively, it sounds like we probably ended that with a surplus. I have absolutely no idea how much of a surplus, but it's unlikely that we ended up in a deficit, at least. So, it's possible that we may end up with some money there that will factor into the overall tax burden as well. Okay, so, all of that discussion about highway, set aside for the moment, anything further? My view would be, we're at seven fifty, wow, we are remarkably close to my agenda, even with a bunch of people not being here. Let's, I'd suggest, unless anyone feels strongly otherwise, that we go back to our operating expenditures and work down through and have more discussion about our town remuneration. And I guess I'll start by saying, on that, Gwen, thank you for the email that you sent that had some of the comparison for the town clerk and assistant town clerk and treasurer and assistant treasurer.
I just want to make a point on that. Those were taken from that, the book that we received from VLCT. But, some of these figures are actually higher, because they said when that was printed. In the meantime, there's been some of the, the towns that have actually gave people raises and increases, but I wasn't gonna go through all that, so, some of these, these figures are just kind of like, they're not exactly accurate, because some of them have gotten raises since this, that was published.
Okay, but it, right, but they're, yeah, I mean, the, as
Gives you an idea.
Cool could be, yeah, right, okay. Shelby, have you had an opportunity to do any investigation, or get anywhere with looking at the?
Yeah, um, the only thing I really did was I took the, and I didn't have a chance to send it back to you guys, but I did take this spreadsheet, and I took the rough, like, population number, numbers for each of the town, and kind of ordered them by that, 'cause I was just sort of curious to see, once, once we got the numbers from Gwen, thank you so much for doing that, um, I was curious to see, you know, which towns, you know, based on who we were closest to population size, I mean, and that could be all, you know, relative, but I just was kind of curious. So, Grafton has the closest population size to us, based on the rough numbers of, um, what I was able to find, and then Jamaica, Dover, Townsend and New Fane. So, that just sort of, that's how I approached looking at them, um, because I'm assuming, I mean, to an extent, that there's a similar level of, um, you know, what goes into being the town clerk, because different towns or different sizes have a different amount of, you know, infrastructure departments, just, you know, we're smaller. And so, being closest to Grafton in size, obviously, their property values are probably a little bit different than ours, and, you know, taxes are all kind of what they are, but, um, I, I, I was looking at that, and I just, I just think it's interesting that there is a notable difference there. And then I also thought it was interesting how low New Fane's numbers were. I was a little surprised by that. I would have expected them to be higher, I guess. So, yeah, so all I did basically was just look at the.
Okay, so, I guess one thing that I'll say before we go through this is, you know, I, I appreciate the comparison of neighboring towns. You know, in, in a, in a perfect world, I think we would be doing this analysis on a much broader range of towns than just these ones, but given the time constraints, that may not be realistic to do. And, you know, I'm, I'm not completely sure where this leaves us, other than I will, you know, I'll bring us back to that, you know, it was suggested at our last meeting that both the town clerk position and the town treasurer position be, that their pay rate be changed from nineteen seventy-five to twenty-one seventy-five. So, essentially, an increase of two dollars an hour. Okay. Unless I'm mistaken, and Guy can help me verify this, I believe that the number we've historically budgeted has been predicated on twenty-one hours a week, right? Which equates to a thousand and ninety-two hours a year, right? So, we're basically looking at a twenty-one hun, you know, in the case of the town clerk, of course, what I will say is, yeah, so that basically would be an increase of about twenty-one, twenty-one eighty-four, essentially, over what our previous budgeted number was, in the case of the town clerk. I am not sure that, given the situation we're in right now, that it is quite frankly warranted for the treasurer's rate to be changed. My personal view is, for the time being, that rate should actually stay at nineteen seventy-five. Now, the other thing I'll say is the hours that are calculated in things need to be revisited. But, sticking just with the town clerk for the moment, if we increase the town clerk rate to twenty-one seventy-five, that brings the budgeted number for that up to whatever, twenty-one five sixty plus, twenty-one eight four is, would bring that up to twenty-three seven forty-four. Let's just go around and see how people feel about that, I guess, before we get too far down the road. Gwen, what's your thinking about doing that increase for the town clerk?
Am I supposed to abstain because he's my husband?
Well, I, I guess here's what I'd say. You know, yeah, it's, strictly speaking, that is probably the definition of a conflict of interest. However, we know that you have that conflict of interest, and I'm not asking anybody to vote on this.
Oh, okay.
I'm, so I genuinely would like to know what your opinion is, though.
My opinion is, I know, I know what the town clerk's office is, what it's responsible for, and I know the amount of hours that he spends there, that he does not charge the town for, so I have no problem with it. Understand what I'm?
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Okay.
Joseph, what's your thinking about the increase? Based now with some data that we've accumulated?
Yeah, um, well, I will say, just looking at the numbers, obviously, there's a, a couple outliers. We're not, we're not too far off from other towns and kind of what I expected to see. But, I'm curious, when was the last time we raised, uh, when did we set that rate?
Six years ago.
Twenty seventeen, sixteen? Yeah, it was during, I actually found a spreadsheet somewhere that said it, yeah, so the, the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year, it was increased, and it's been the same since then.
Okay, um, well, I, I definitely think that a, that we don't want to fall too far behind, not necessarily the other towns, but, um, you know, the, uh, the job market as a whole. But I, I would say that maybe a, uh, without, without, I don't know where, where that number came from, twenty-one seventy-five, but I think it would be appropriate to give a wage increase that is equal to the cost of living increase since that wage was last set. And, uh, I'm not entirely sure, you know, I don't have hard numbers sitting in front of me now, but I, I think it would probably come out a little bit lower than that, but not tremendously lower. But, uh, I think possibly for setting a precedent on how wages will be increased, it might be a good idea to, to go with, um, just what cost of living has, has gone up since the wage was last set, but that's just.
For reference, I mean, this is, we're basically talking about a ten percent increase.
In six years.
I don't know, I don't have a, I'm not smart enough to figure it out, but I'm pretty sure cost of living over the course of six years would have likely been more than ten percent. But, maybe not. There's probably, maybe there were points where it didn't go up at all, or, um, but that, yeah, that's, that's beyond my.
Yeah, just, I, I will say, just from, just from Googling it, it, it looks like, uh, in the last five years, cost of living has gone up nine, what Google says is nine point seven nine percent since two thousand fifteen. And, and again, I'm not, not saying that we, we should be setting, uh, the rate based on a quick Google search. I just think that maybe that warrants, uh, looking into, 'cause at least then we have, um, you know, sort of a, there's a solid surface to stand on in, in terms of, uh, how we're increasing the wage. It's, now, it won't be arbitrary.
Right, Guy, you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to interject, uh, that the, most of these towns where you see these rates, all those towns offer hospitalization, uh, vacations, time off, simply, the town of Brookline has none of those, uh, benefits. So, I, I, I think, you know, going forward, because obviously I'm not gonna be the town clerk forever and ever, but to make the job, or the, to recruit someone who's gonna be interested in this job, I think we have to have a favorable rate going forward. And as, as Joseph said, that staying within the, the realms of what's going on in the area, I think is important. And like I say, the fact that we don't have those perks, and I'm not by any means complaining, but I just think going forward to, uh, make the, the recruitment a little more attractive, I think a job, I mean, a rate increase is in the order at this point.
Shelby, just, and we did, not, we can continue this, but Shelby, what's your thinking about the potential of this rate increase, and what's your thinking about the situation?
Yeah, um, I definitely think that an increase is warranted. But I just, something that kind of keeps coming up that I find a little bit concerning about doing, um, doing too large of an increase, if potentially there would also be somebody else doing the job, is that the, Guy mentions a lot, and Gwen, all the hours you don't bill us for. I, I don't personally, I don't personally think you should be doing anything you don't bill for, even if it means the number of hours that the position actually takes goes up, and we have to start budgeting off that number. I think you should be being reimbursed for your time. And I think if there's a lot that you're doing that you're not reimbursing for, we have, we don't really have a clear picture of what goes into the position, which I think is problematic if we are gonna be doing large adjustments to any hours, or to any wages, because then we really, it, it's not necessarily, and, and not saying you're retiring right now, but like, you know, if you were to say next year, that's it, we've increased it, made it more attractive, I'm out, recruit someone new, they come in, and suddenly the job is actually ten hours more a week, when they're actually billing for it. That just has a much larger impact on the budget. That's, I'm not saying I don't want to increase it, or that increase it to the amount you brought up, or any other amount. I'm just saying that that's kind of something that I'm finding a little bit concerning about the whole process, are those kind of free hours we're getting that aren't being factored in to what it might look like if somebody else stepped in tomorrow and started doing the job, and billing us for every hour they were actually working.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a fair point, and something to consider moving forward.
Again, generally pro an increase, just, that's something that just keeps, that I think's something that's worth thinking about moving forward.
Yep, um, I mean, I guess what I will say, you know, and, and I think in the past, when, maybe not in all circumstances, but in some circumstances, when analyses have been done of compensation and comparisons from the rest of the state, or just from the area, or whatever, I, I think, honestly, from where I stand, the cold reality is, I do think, I, I actually think probably all of our positions deserve to be compensated at, the town positions deserve to be compensated at higher rates, and probably are in many communities. I think going with an increase, even if it is not necessarily bulletproof in how it was derived, but is an increase that gets us closer to being comparable without jacking our budget up by an exponential amount is perhaps the, all we can hope to do in the structure that we've got. So, I'll say that the, that the increase, the two-dollar increase So I'll say that the, that the increase, the two-dollar increase, though it may not be consistent with cost of living in either direction potentially, the fact that it's essentially a ten percent increase, it's a round number, it's easily calculated, and it has not an enormous impact on the bottom line. I think it makes sense to do in the structure. Like I say, I'll fully admit, and I know I said this before and I'll say it again, I wish we had started this process two months ago, because I really would like to have more of a comparison of the entire state, but we are where we are. So my feeling is we should do that increase for now, put it in there at the, I'll have to run the number again, the twenty-three, whatever it comes out to be. Gwen, are you okay with plugging that number in for now? Actually, I'm not going to give you a chance to say on that, because that is a conflict. Joseph, are you okay with putting in the number, sorry, let me, which is going to be twenty-three thousand seven forty-four?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And as we've said before, right, not that I want to go back and re-discuss and relitigate every line item of this, but the reality is, until we've done all of the budgeted numbers and have a grasp on what the bottom line is, realistically, we may go back and revisit things, and that's okay, as long as we don't go back and revisit large swaths of it. Shelby, what do you think? Are you okay with plugging that number in for now?
Yeah, I'm definitely good with plugging that number in for now, and kind of like you noted before, maybe not plugging it in for the treasurer, but plugging it in for the town clerk, which I think is what you were, you were only alluding to that one number, right? Okay, cool, yes, then I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay, so here's, here's another subject that I just want to clarify so that there's no confusion over this, although maybe this will become confusing. We currently have a situation, obviously, where, I mean, am I right that currently, Guy, I mean, I'll ask Guy, currently, Guy, you get paid the same rate for all of the different roles that you hold in the town.
Yes, delinquent tax.
Delinquent tax collector, you get paid the same rate. Assistant treasurer, you get paid the same rate. How, I mean, I'll just, I'll ask you first, my feeling is, we'd be keeping the other rates at nineteen seventy-five. We wouldn't be unless, unless we're ultimately talking about, because then we're talking about increasing delinquent tax collector on some level, the assistant treasurer. Now, let me ask, is that a challenge for you to be able to differentiate those if they have different rates?
Basically, I'm trying to get the town clerk's rate at a comparable rate that's, that's, that in the future will attract viable candidates again.
Right, but then, yeah.
And also be compensated for what, what the town clerk in this particular town does.
Right. And do you, and, but genuinely, just as the person who does all these roles, and, and just as an individual, do you feel okay about the fact that there's going to be a different rate for your role as town clerk than there will be for your other roles?
Um, no, I can live with that, because again, my concern as a town clerk, the other role, the other, I didn't ask for any rate increases in other things, and it's hard to differentiate when someone comes in and asks you, can you give me my tax bills? Can you do that, you know? You can't just say, oh, wait a second, I gotta put on a different coat because it's two dollars now, unless, you know? It's just, it's just the nature of the beast, and that's part of being the town clerk.
Right.
Basically, I was just concerned about the town clerk fees. The others, I can live with at the nineteen seventy-five, the best agreeable rate that we have. And I think that was also comparable to what the treasurer and everything, the treasurer was also.
Right, right. So let me ask you this, not that I want to get too bogged down in our, but when you put in time sheets, do you, you differentiate between the roles? So that's not, this, having different rates isn't, we're not setting up a scenario that Samara is going to stab me in the neck for when she finds out about this.
Look at the rates that we have, because I differentiate how much time I do as assistant treasurer, how much is delinquent tax collector, how much is town clerk.
Okay, okay. Okay, so is everybody clear on that and understanding the point that we're only going to be increasing, so far of what we're talking about, we're only going to be increasing the town clerk? We will keep delinquent tax collector, and, well, we'll keep delinquent tax collector as it is. And speaking as the delinquent tax collector guy, time-wise, do you still think you're, the time we budgeted for delinquent tax collector and the corresponding cost makes sense?
That seems to work good, because there's a, there's a great deal of the work between going to attorneys, doing certified letters, looking for people, you know, in any given year, it's hard to determine what is going to happen. This year, it's, I still have one, actually two, delinquencies left to a total of six hundred dollars. But we're very fortunate that the taxpayers did come through and neutralized their responsibility, but, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, and anybody else yell at me if I'm going too fast about this, but here's what I'm going to propose. I'm going to propose, so we've plugged in, if we're looking at our spreadsheet, we've plugged in twenty-three seven forty-four for the town clerk. We're going to skip over the treasurer for the moment, and we'll discuss treasurer and assistant treasurer as a group. We're going to put in thirty-six hundred for the delinquent tax collector, just to keep that the same. The listers, um, so we don't have any analysis of the lister rate, so I'm going to suggest, for the time being, we leave the lister compensation rate where it is. But I will point out that we have, historically, I'm just looking to try to see what, it looks like we budget, or those numbers are predicated on, I think fifteen? I'm looking, I mean, I see Mersha, three and a half, one and a half. I'm trying to figure out the hours that this corresponds to.
Is there anything that pay warrants that show her this?
One point one. Um, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm adding up the, I have a break, a broken down of this. It, um, three point six. Sorry for the calculation. No, sorry, I'm giving texts while I'm trying to use my calculator. One second. Okay, it's ten hours collectively. So historically, we have budgeted ten hours a week for lister time collectively. The, I know that things over the last couple of years have been pretty slow with the listers. This current year, well, this year, they're pretty much on pace for that. Yeah, yeah, the previous year, less so, but this year, so far, they're pretty much on pace for three thousand, according to what I'm looking at. So I'm going to suggest we leave that at three thousand, because it does seem to be a well-thought-out number. Auditors, I don't think there's any reason to change that. There's nothing, we have nothing, we haven't spent anything on auditors at the moment, but that's not surprising, because they haven't gotten any of the final books from Samara. You know, it doesn't take a whole lot to eat up eight hundred dollars in their time. I suggest we keep that as is. Assistant town clerk, I'll ask the town clerk, do you think there needs to be any adjustment to hours for the assistant town clerk? Or do we think that that's been allocated fairly well? We were a little bit over last year, but this year, again, I don't know how accurate this is, it's, but then some of this has probably gone into the records restoration.
Right, that's why that happened. And if you, if you put it as separate, um.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think that's good, in light of the fact of what's going on, um. Fifteen seems to be low, when you could work at like dollars to fifteen dollars an hour. You know, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and I, I don't, you know, I mean, by that token, I mean, our listers get paid twelve dollars, you know, twelve fifty. I mean, it's, I, I'm not, I'm not going to argue with the fact that most of our town positions are probably not, are not compensated as much as I would like them to be compensated. But I will say, I'm not going to be willing to change anything else without a more comprehensive analysis than what we've got so far, and also with more time than we currently have, so.
When I look at, you know, the other assistants there, between sixteen and eighteen dollars an hour, and we're paying fifteen dollars an hour, perhaps we have no benefits, no anything. And she, basically, the assistant clerk can do most of everything that the town clerk can do. You know, she's trained in that respect. I don't know, I almost feel that we should be putting that in the compensation.
What are other people's thinking about this? I mean, obviously, Gwen, you're going to recuse yourself from this discussion. And the thing that becomes, yeah, this is going to become a dicey subject.
Well, salaries.
But Joseph, well, they do, but they don't, they don't happen, like I say, in a vacuum like this. We have, I, I don't, I don't disagree that there are probably, but again, now I'm going to pull back and say, we should really have numbers for all of these positions, and we should be looking at all of them. I was willing to, under the constraints we're in, make a decision on one position in isolation, but now this feels like we're getting into looking at all of them again. Joseph, what's your feeling about considering and increasing the budgeted amount or the, the pay rates, I guess, for the assistant town clerk?
I sort of agree with you that we can't really keep, um, we can't look at all of these as an isolated thing without, you know, a larger analysis. I, I am concerned with the prospect of continuing to, to put the pay increases off, because I think that if we, if we fall behind the surrounding towns, as well as if, um, like, let's say that, you know, we don't increase it at all, and then, and then Gwen and Guy decide that they're done, we might be, uh, we might be in a really tough spot where we'd have to increase it a bunch just to attract someone, and that's something that I'm specifically worried about with the treasurer as well. But I think what that all points to is that we need to, we can't really just pick at these individually. We, it worked sort of for the town clerk, like we just discussed, but I think that we're going to need to revisit this with more time and more data for all the other positions. I, they all do need to be adjusted, I would say, or at least looked at.
Right. Shelby, what's your thinking about this specific situation?
Um, yeah, I guess now that the issue is kind of being raised about a second position, my gut is much more comfortable doing, say, an across-the-board two percent increase on all positions to start moving toward a different goal, and then when we have time to do a more in-depth analysis to restructure, you know, salaries that seem more appropriate for the positions. I mean, if we think it's important for them to be increased, rather than increasing one significantly, I'd rather increase them all across the board by a percentage that we feel can at least make a point that we're moving toward a different rate structure, and then make it a priority for next year to start analyzing it on a much larger scale and figure out if there are some really targeted adjustments we need to make to make the position's compensation really match what's going on.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure, again, where this leaves us. You know, I don't, I know I keep saying it, though. I'm not the only one who can read a calendar. You know, I started the budget discussion when we had the special meeting last week by noting that one of the things that I thought we really needed to do during the upcoming year was to evaluate all of the positions for, to look to increase potentially across the board, because we hadn't done that kind of analysis in a number of years. I, I fully admit that I wish that I had had the time and the energy to do that two months ago, but I didn't. Unfortunately, neither did anyone else bring up this subject until last week. So we can, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to consider increasing other positions, but like I say, than that, you know, I don't, I can't predict how long that's going to take. So we could, you know, we can continue to table portions of this indefinitely. I mean, we had a week, and we've gotten a little bit of analysis. Maybe with another couple of weeks, we can get a lot more analysis, I'm sure.
I hate this. I mean, maybe it's not the proper answer, but it seems as though with everything going on this year, it might be best just to really make sure that this is a big-ticket agenda item for next year. We've made one increase this year, but, and I do have maybe a few questions about what's happening with the treasurer, but, uh, and other than that, it might be good to just kind of close the book on it this year and with a big note that it's, uh, it's something that has to be handled next year, so we don't fall tremendously behind, because I think there's, there's a lot of dangers to that, both budget-wise as well as personnel-wise.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, yeah, I think those, I think those are good points, and I don't disagree with any of that. And I guess I'll, Guy, you had something you wanted to say about VLCT?
Oh, yes, I mean, all the data that you need, that you'll ever need, is in the compensation book that we have here in the office. And it shows, you know, that the rates are all over the place. Each town is responsible for what they think that they can live with. And as I pointed out, this town has been very fortunate not to have to pay hospitalization, sick time, vacation time, so on and so forth. And I think we, we waited and waited and waited, and I think it's time that the town is pulled into the twenty-first century and face reality. We cannot level fund, level fund, level fund. When you see increases in insurance, you see increases in supplies, you see increases in fees, I mean, it's almost impossible to stay level funded. And the town has to be able to realize that. And the town has to be able to realize that. And unfortunately, between. The fees and the, the cost of supplies and everything else, and also to be fairly compensated for what you do. I think is part of the reality. Education costs, which are eighty-five percent of this town budget. Have escalated to a point where twenty-eight percent last year, nine percent this year, I mean. Um. I, I don't know, uh.
Right, well, we obviously have no control over that.
Right.
But we do have.
The municipal side.
We do. We do. And what we're talking about is, of course, increasing that cost to.
Yeah.
Individuals. And I'm not, like I say, I, by no means do I want anything that I'm saying to be construed that I don't think. That. All of our municipal employees should be paid more. Because I do think they should be paid more. But. The reality is. I, you know, it. That I think time and thought. Um, and comprehension. Needs to go into that because, you know, if we, if we just decide because we're under the gun and. There's a convincing argument from our town clerk. Uh, that his assistant should be paid more. Then. I don't feel right about not having. Looked at. Other rates. Um. And had the discussion with. I guess a more extensive discussion and inviting the treasurer to talk about what the. Treasurer and assistant treasurer's rate should be. And then at that point, I don't really feel great about not having revisited the lister's compensation or the auditor's compensation. Um, and again, I, I'm not saying that this isn't a problem that we need to deal with, but. You know. We have been kicking the can down the road for a number of years.
Yes, we have.
And unfortunately, given both the timing and to Joseph's point. The situation that real people are in. Right now, I mean, we talk about cost of living, I don't want to get. Way overboard, but in my, in my employment, I haven't had a cost of living increase in eight years. So there are, you know, there are people who. You know, it's, it's a difficult time.
When you get vacations, you get healthcare, you get days off, you get.
Yeah, you also, Guy, let's not get into this, this is also a part-time job. I mean, I, I don't think, I'm in no way, shape or form in my trying to compare my full-time. Employment to your part-time job.
Okay.
Um, and I, again, I don't have a problem with the fact that I, I've said, I don't know how many times I got to say it. I believe that all of the, all of these roles should be paid more. But as a board that represents this town. I think we owe it to the townspeople to do an analysis and do it in a thoughtful way. And I, I'll say, I'm totally willing for that to be now, if we want to do it now. I'm happy to. You know, we can go discuss other things and then. Somebody, you know, maybe a team of us can volunteer again to do more of an analysis. Of all of these positions on a statewide basis.
Well, to put it.
Go ahead, Joseph.
Another, um. Piece of this picture is that, uh. We, not only are people deserving of, um. To be more fairly compensated, but the other side of this is that we want to be competitive in attracting, uh. Potential. Employees, uh, whether it's now, and, and this is a problem that we've been dealing with this year with, um. We're sort of dealing with, with the, you know, the treasurer, but then obviously we're going to have to deal with. Being competitive, uh, in all of these positions at some point in time. And, uh, Guy keeps bringing up that we don't have any benefits here at this town. I think that i- if we're looking at, um. Being competitive and. As well as, uh, properly reimbursing people for their time. I don't know if we should have a comprehensive discussion about wage increases without having some sort of educated discussion about. Uh, at least the potential benefits that we could offer or that other towns do offer and how that could be worked into the, um. The overall picture, maybe it doesn't have to be a wage increase, maybe there's certain benefits that. I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure, but is there certain benefits that we're way behind other towns and. Uh, that's something that, uh. Could be used to. Change the equation on just the simple wages.
Yep, that's a fair point. Um. I guess I'll, I'm welcome, I'm. Open to suggestions on where we go from here. Because I'll be honest, I really don't know. Um. I guess we could just table, again. The discussions of all of these positions and what we're going to budget. On them. Uh, and. Maybe try to have. In a little bit of time, start to have a discussion about one of the other open items. Um. But. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what a solution is to this. Again, only because of the timing.
I mean, I'm happy to pick up where. Gwen started to and gather more information, I've honestly only had two days since my class ended between that and this meeting. So my schedule's going to continue to be more open now for the next couple of weeks, so, um. I, I, but I, I think that if we had to make a decision right now, I don't know that I feel good about. Anyone. Decision we made, so if we put that number in the budget, you know, as a, just a. A holder to see. Um, what that looks like that in the worksheet, which you had already, we had already agreed to just make that change. I say we leave that for now, um, address another issue, a di- a different issue tonight, so we can try and. Find some consensus on something. And then, um. Uh, I'm happy to put in some more work and try to get some more numbers to flush out the spreadsheet a little bit more. Before the next meeting.
So, um, can I ask, uh, has anybody been able to track down the electronic version of a compensation? Manual? The VLCT?
VLCT, I don't get any call back.
Okay.
Um, in that case, could I borrow the one at the office? I had asked about that and was told it couldn't leave because it's the only one. I have no intention of losing it or. Doing anything wild and crazy like burning it out back, I just. If I'm going to spend some considerable, you know, some time with it, it'd be a lot easier to do it. Um, at home than at the town office.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go as far as to say, like, going through the physical one isn't, I mean. I'm, I'm willing to try to find some time to go through and do some stuff, but I need the electronic version. Um. It's, it won't, it won't really be practical to.
Control act is a really cool thing.
Especially with both of us, whatever. Yeah. Um. But so, so that one can't leave the office, Shelby wouldn't be able to borrow it.
Um, I think we can get an electronic version, I mean, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we've had them, and we had one last year, I don't, I don't know who.
Um, I'm, uh. You know, I, it doesn't matter, you can, it, the compensation book is the town's. Uh, we basically had to answer a survey to get a free copy of it. But, um, if it's all right with Samara, it's all right with me, I, I'm. Doesn't.
Do you want to, Shelby, do you want to reach out to Samara? And ask her about getting the.
Yeah, I can do that.
Shelby.
Shelby, the reason.
I'll, I'll send an email right now.
Thanks.
The reason I said my understanding. She, was when we only have one copy in the office and because it's happened in the past. People borrow it and never return it. That's why I told you my understanding was because we only had one copy, it couldn't leave the office.
Which is a fair, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I can understand why. We would try to avoid. Having anybody take it down, if we could get an electronic one, then that'll solve everything and that we won't have to deal with. Taking, taking that out. Um, that would probably be better anyway. Um, okay, so just for clarity, we're essentially. Going to put a pin in. Everything from town clerk. Down to. Assistant treasurer again. Um, for the moment, hopefully we can. Get a little more. Details on some things and when we regroup on this January sixth, we'll, um. We'll have more information, we can really flesh things out more. Um, so just, I don't want to take a whole lot of time. Um, but let's. Spend, are people okay, what are we, let's spend ten, fifteen minutes talking about. Uh. I'm just looking down the assistant records. Restoration is something we need to flag. Payroll taxes will be dependent on that, so we can't do that. Um, if we, I guess we jump down to. Let's talk about recycling. For a little bit. Um, because that's going to cheer us all up. Um. So. Recycling. You know, we'll, as we have done in the past, we will warn this as its own article. Um, for people to vote up or down. Um, I asked Samara and Mike to pull. Some details about it over the last couple of years. Um. You know, I looked at it and made some. Gases, and they are purely guesses on the direction, the trend that is happening. As far as the cost, both of. Because we're having to collect it more frequently, so the trucking cost goes up. And because the. Material handling. Has gone up. Um. Although. It at least hasn't gone up by a whole lot lately. Let's look and see, sorry, I'm just looking real quick at the. I realized I didn't look at the invoice for, it actually went down. The processing rate actually went down a little bit, um. Recently. So that's. Encouraging, I suppose. Um, you know, we budgeted, we, the voters approved twenty-two thousand dollars for the current fiscal year. Um. You'll see that, you know, pending some cleaning up, we, we came in a little bit below the eighteen thousand last year. Um. You know, we're, we're not even halfway through the year, so it's a little tough to project, but my guess at the moment. Is that we're probably going to come in slightly over the twenty-two thousand. For this fiscal year. We might not, we might come close to it, especially if the rates have gone down and stayed down a little bit. But we're going to be right about probably at twenty-two, if not higher. Without it factoring in any kind of security or anything like that. Um. I think we're going to have to propose at least twenty-four thousand dollars. For the next fiscal year. And I actually think we might even want to consider more like twenty-five or twenty-six thousand. Um. But. Should, I, I guess I'll throw out a general question of something that occurred to me. Um. I now tend to think, based on some of the conversations we've had, that we should budget. We should build in, and we can explain this to everyone at the informational meeting that we will be required to have. Um, I think we should build into this cost. Our estimate of what the actual trucking and processing of the materials might be. For the upcoming fiscal year, but also. Some amount of. What we think it would cost us to. Provide some level of. Video surveillance or whatever. To that, and also. Cleaning up the site and whatever that might take, I think we should build that into the cost. For this service and have that all be part of what is worn. Um, let's just go around just to get a general. Take on whether people think that makes sense or not, Gwen, do you think that that makes sense? Number, the exact number's notwithstanding, but that whether, that we would build in. The cost of. Whatever cameras or whatever we would decide we were going to potentially do, try to build that into the. The cost that we warn on the article.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, it is a cost of having to run the thing.
Right. Yeah.
We have five hundred dollars somewhere in here.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that could be.
Um, Joseph, what's your thinking about that concept?
Yeah, I think we gotta, we gotta look at the, um. Cost, you know, entirely, and we have to make it really clear, I see on the, um. Oh. I don't know, I was just like, uh, the town trash removal, that's the, um, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That we have, I, I think that it would make sense to, um. Decide on whether we're going to do surveillance and. Clean up or. Maybe just clean up or whatever the heck we decide, I, I do think that it needs to be, uh, included in the cost and, and made clear to the, um. To the voters that, um. You know. The, the trouble that we've been dealing with and then it sucks, but it, it's going to be. You know, if, if you want, if, if you say it's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars, if that's roughly where we need to be, it's quite possible that we might be. Couple thousand dollars over that just, uh. To realistically run the darn thing for a year, so.
Uh, Shelby, what do you think about that concept?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm all for, um, building in and making sure that those costs are reflected as part of the cost of continuing recycling. And making sure that's clear, um, I, I think that it was really close last year, even with just the increase and not, you know. Discussing the idea that if we continue, we have a responsibility to provide some, or attempt some sort of security around the site. Um, so I think that we should definitely present it. Um, in the budget that there's the cost of recycling. In addition, there's these costs associated with it, um, so if the town chooses to vote to have it. Um, it, it's more than just that one number.
Right. Um. So. I mean. At the moment, I'll say, I don't think we're going to probably, I don't think any amount of time. Any reasonable amount of time is going to give us any more clarity on. Predicting the future of recycling costs. Um. So based on what I see right now and what I think is. Something of a trend. You know, I. Like I say, I think it has to be at least twenty-four thousand without anything else added into it. And I could be convinced of higher. But here's, here's the challenge to. That. Scenario is. Then we got to figure out what we might, or at least a, some kind of reasonable estimate of what it would cost. To do something about that recycling site, which of course, we've yet to. Even have a discussion of what we might do, let alone figure out what that would cost. So I'll throw out there. An idea. Which is, you know, we've discussed at various points. The idea that, you know, realistically, I guess. Unless we're going to go super crazy. If we were going to try to improve that situation from a. Trash. Dumping and vandalism standpoint anyway. We could put cameras up in some, somehow. If we think we want to try to improve that situation. To control most anything other than mischief and trash dumping. I'm not sure there's a. Gwen just dropped off, but I assume she'll come back. I'm not sure there's a. Solution. That we particularly have that's viable. That we particularly have that's viable. So are people. Are people. Are people on board with the idea that we would estimate? What we could reasonably do to. Monitor the site from a. Extreme vandalism and. Potentially trash dumping standpoint. By that, I mean, we're not going to get to the point where we can tell if people who don't live here are using those bins. Unless we have a person who's. Monitoring them, unless we turn it into some kind of transfer station. I just don't see a way that that's going to be possible. But we could put up potentially cameras to. See people who are. Opening the back of the bin and trashing the place or whatever, something particularly. Elaborate. Does that, Joseph, does that make sense to you, or do you think we need to try to? Do something more extensive than that?
Well, I guess, when I've been thinking about it, uh, it would be either that or something a little less permanent. Um. Because when, just guessing, if we're going to put cameras up, we're going to have to um. It doesn't make sense to. Just skimp on it, and so it's going to be. Several thousand dollars at the very least to, to get a pole and power and, and internet to the camera. Um. The als, the, the thing also is that. Doesn't, isn't really a good investment for the town, because if it's. Twenty-five thousand dollars this year. And five thousand dollars for a poll. And they vote for it this year, that's all well and good, but what happens if um. Next year, it's, it's, you know, they don't vote for it, so we just wasted five grand putting a camera up. So I think that possibly, we might just consider. Um, as a way to deal with the vandalism, the vandalism and the trash is just hire somebody that um. Once a week is going to go there and um pick up the trash and. Shut the door and uh, you know, and that's going to be a relatively significant amount of money too. Um. You know, thousands of dollars I would expect. Uh. But I, I think that that might be a better. Solution for the town in the long term um. Than putting something up. But yeah, I did, I don't think that we can get by saying five hundred bucks that we'll use if we have to. I think that if we. If we put it up, that it might be best just to, to hire somebody who will come in and, and pay them a weekly rate. Uh, that will add up to, to a large sum at the end of the year.
Um, well, we can circle back to that in a second. Shelby, what's your thinking about the?
I mean, I think I was thinking about. Starting a lot less expensive, like a. Trail camera with a good lock and a place to secure it and batteries and. I mean, you can get a decent enough trail camera to start identifying some of the issues for under a hundred bucks, so um. That was what I was thinking. I mean, I haven't walked around the site, I don't know where we would put it, so maybe the whole pole and thousands of dollars thing is still part of the picture, but. Um. I, I mean, memory cards can hold a lot of images and. I don't know, I was kind of thinking more something like, you know, starting with small efforts and seeing where that gets us. So I was not thinking a huge budget in the security. Aspect, but maybe if you combine security with somebody to keep it clean, it's a little bit more money, but yeah, I don't know, that's what I was thinking, something much.
I mean, I'll say that to, to sort of dovetail back on, on both of your points, I was, I was more thinking along Shelby's lines in, in a few respects. One, again, I don't, whatever, I've never owned a. Trail camera and I have my own concerns about the feasibility of even using a trail camera to capture some of this stuff. Um, but. I, I thought potentially. And I, I can't remember if everybody was here when I, but you know, the, it occurred to me the other day when I was at the recycling center, that there are actually. Trees on the opposite side of the brook that look right at the back of the bin. Or, or we have Mark put up a pole, which we could certainly do. We have lumber, we could put a pole up that wouldn't cost us much. And if we put. Some battery operated trail cameras or something solar, I don't know, but also it could be something that. Has potentially some reusability elsewhere in town. If. A year down the road, then the recycling bins go away. That it would be portable enough. That. And, and I agree with you, Joseph, if we're really going to do this the right way. We would do something that's wired and everything else, but maybe the. Maybe what we would estimate would be doing it the. Less. Right, but still with the potential to capture something, because to Joseph's point, getting more, getting more organized about having somebody goes and cleans up the site. And closes the back of it if somebody has opened it is good, but at some point. I feel like we do need to make. Some reasonable effort if we can to try to. Capture whoever is doing that, which maybe we could do with. Trail, with one or two trail cameras positioned a certain way, maybe not.
There's. Uh, I've, I've thought about the trail cams a good deal and I've had uh some experience with, with trail cams, but also with um. Actual security cameras and break-ins and vandals and stuff. Uh, the two big problems with the trail cam is for one. Unless it's on a real pole, i- if it's on a tree or if it's on, you know, some two-by-fours, there is a very high potential. That the vandals will steal or destroy the game cam. Um, which is not good. Uh, also. Even if they don't steal or destroy it and we catch pictures of them. They're not going to be immediately. Conclusive pictures. It's not like we're going to take that picture to the cops and they're going to go arrest somebody. It, it's not. Really going to solve our. Problem too much, you know, maybe it's a, a picture of um somebody with a hoodie up. And, and then the cops uh. Don't have time to look into it anyways and yada, yada, yada. Maybe they'll find someone six months down the road. Uh, I think with the camera. The main goal with the camera is deterrence, which um, I don't think you're going to get with a game cam. Um. So that, that's what my, I definitely, yes, you could put up game cameras and you could put up two. Uh, one to watch the camera if it gets stolen and one to watch the uh, the place, but I just don't think it's going to solve the problem whatsoever. Uh, even if we do get footage of them, it's, it's not going to stop it.
Well, and right, and I'll, I'll freely admit that part of the reason to put up the cameras would be the deterrent. Potential deterrent, hopeful deterrent that people would, we would, you know, we would have something better than the sign there that says whatever it says. Um, but then there would actually be cameras. Without us having to spend an enormous amount of money on. Better cameras.
But that, I guess.
To your point, quite frankly, even if we did go, I'm not convinced that even if we did go the route of getting. And I know you're not saying this, I know this isn't weird, but even if we did go the route of getting very expensive, high-quality cameras. The odds that we would ever. Get whoever might do something uh prosecuted in any way, shape or form, I think are extremely slim. Um. But I guess, Gwen, sorry, you dropped off, but then you're back. Um. I'm not exactly sure when.
I dropped, my battery on my phone died.
Um, so just, we're going to take just a few more minutes and then we'll wrap this up, but. Um. I guess the idea, do, if we were going to estimate something for security, let's call it. For the moment, for that recycling area to build into the warned cost of that service. Do you think we should just? Approximate a. Couple of game cameras that we might put somewhere or, or maybe we shouldn't do anything. Maybe to Joseph's point. And I'm not, not that this was your only point, but to one of the things you said, maybe what we build in is merely. Somebody other than Guy. Consistently having to go and. Clean the place up and deal with things that might have happened and we budget in that cost. Maybe surveilling the place is not even worth. The effort of coming up with an approximation. I'm not sure. Gwen, what do you think in general about it?
This has been such a can of worms. Um, it's so hard to say. I mean, there's some, some, we, some weeks, you know, a week or two goes by and everything's fine. You know, it, the back door may only happen once every other week. You don't know. Because we don't know what's going on there. It's just. I think if they, if the, people think they're being surveilled, I think they might stop doing the crap.
Well, and I suppose if we, if we did something like, and again, we're, I'm glossing over the particulars of how any of this would happen, but. If we did something with a game camera. And we're able to just. Capture the back of the, you know, relatively speaking, the back of it, maybe if it happens, maybe we would at least be able to see what it was. If it was in fact, kids screwing around or if it was. An individual going into the bin and taking things out. It might be informative, I guess. I don't know what.
Right.
Necessarily help us. Decide what to do about it, but it would give us some information which we don't have now, which.
And if we had the small camera and even got one picture and we recognized the person. Uh, the select board could write them a letter saying that, you know, we noticed if you don't, if cease and desist or you will. The, the police will be called, something, just to let them know that they're being watched.
Right. Um, okay, um, unless anybody has some super profound thoughts on this, um, I suggest we wrap it up. Uh, what I would ask though is this. Um. I guess. I, I've, I know nothing about game cameras. I've never owned one or bought one. It, either Shelby or Joseph, you both have. Been. Stupid enough to open your mouths and say that you have experience, some experience with them. Could we come up with some kind of? Estimate. Of what we think. A couple of. Adequate game cameras would cost. Just so we know if we decide that's something we want to build into. The cost of this.
Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Um.
Well, I, I think um. I can say. Just off the top of my head, you could get adequate game cameras for under. Two hundred dollars, easy. And. And then implementing it, that's the other problem with game cams is even if you just put them on trees. Um. Then you gotta. Pay someone or get someone to volunteer to. To check out the data, but yeah, the, the, the cost of the game cams alone would, would certainly, uh, you could be under two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think we've generally spent between like eighty and one-twenty. And I mean, the ones on the eighty, definitely the quality's not the same. I mean, yeah, but there's, they should not be. Definitely no more than what Joseph said for an individual camera.
So I guess then the, the corollary to that is um. Can people give thought to? Just speculate on how this would work. And again, I guess. Joseph. And Shelby, because you've worked with these, I mean, I have a general impression of how it would work, but. You know, if we, let's say we put up a poll. And, you know, whatever, Mark puts the poll up and we have that, whatever, we can do that for a nominal amount of money. And we put one game camera, or I don't know, we put up two poles and one game camera's on one and the others. Watching the game camera from the first one. I'm not exactly sure. Logistically. What kind of time commitment? Do we think we're looking at for? Just pick a random scenario like we've been talking about. A week goes by and then somebody opens the. Back of the dumpster and trashes everything. If we had. Two game cameras positioned in some way. What's the kind of time commitment and ongoing time commitment we would need from someone? In order to actually be able to find imagery of that. Setting aside whether anybody can do anything with the imagery, but just to be able to track down the. Still or the video of that action. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, all you do is you just.
That store a lot of information, but. You know, this is going to be motion activated and depending on how we can position it, everybody who goes to the bin is going to trigger that.
You can sift through the images really, really quickly. Um. You, you know, depending on what device you get and, and what device the person's. That's checking it is using to check it. Um, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be time prohibitive at all to, to open up and. And just quickly glance and see, yeah, those people are just recycling and. You know, this person opened the back of the door at two AM. I, I mean, it would be, I would feel confident for, for sure saying that it would be um. Less than. You know, it'd be two hours a week, you could say, mo, and it, you know, it could be twenty minutes. Uh, but I think that you'd want to err on the, the safe side and say it'd be an hour or, or two um to check it.
So, but, but how frequently? Is given the activity that might be there and the storage capacity of the cameras? How frequently is somebody going to have to, because none of this is, I mean, I, I don't think unless we're going to talk about something else. None of this is, all of this is just going to be stored locally on the memory card of that camera.
I would.
So somebody's going to have, how soon will that fill up? And how soon will somebody have to go and download that? So that they can review it.
I, I would say a week is probably uh. Something to think of. You can get cards that hold, I mean, jeez, you can get a. Card that holds a terabyte of information, so you could, you could probably capture a month's worth of stuff, but um. Those are more expensive. It's probably. Unless Shelby has something else to offer, I would say a week is probably. Something that you would, you would want to kind of plan on.
Yeah, I mean, I would say you don't want to go more than a week just because the volume of images that are not significant, that you just have to scroll through to, to confirm that nothing happened during. The times it was triggered. Um, you just wouldn't want more than, I don't think you want to look at more than a week worth of images at one time, but I don't think the limitation would. Be finding a memory card that could last that week. Um, and they have really good estimates based, based on the number of pictures, and it might be a little bit of trial and error in the beginning. It may be. You know, we pick one card and we have somebody go just to check to see how many, because you can usually tell depending on the camera too, how many pictures have been captured. Since the last, you know, since you set the camera up, so. You know, there's, there's that option too, depending on what camera it is, that you would know if you had twenty images in two days or you had seven. Um, so you, you can kind of also check in the beginning to kind of gauge how quickly you're accumulating photos.
Okay. Um, I guess I'd ask in the ensuing time, both of you, if you can just give maybe a little bit more. Thought around quantifying. Time and. And any other costs that you can think of as far as just the cameras and the. Monitoring of the cameras, assuming that we can figure out. Where we would put them separately. Or if we need to, we'd figure that out at that point, but so we can get a sense of how many hours a week and whatever, how, how we might budget for this. Or build in a cost for this.
I, I will say that uh, and I don't know what you're picturing, but when we talk about putting a pole in there, um. The, the game camera, it wouldn't be like up high on the pole. And so again, that kind of brings me back to my primary concern, which, which I'll say pretty adamantly is putting me. Firmly against even trying to use a game cam is that uh. They're going to be easy for people to steal and to quote a little bit of uh military experience, obstacles have to be. Uh, under fire and surveillance, which just. obstacles have to be uh, under fire and surveillance, which just, you know, you can't, you can't put something out there, this obstacle, this game camera, and not have someone steal it. Um, and so I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna say that I'm firmly against a game camera. I think it's a, a waste of time, and uh, and I think that you know, it's almost gonna cause more trouble, 'cause now you got people stealing or breaking things that belong to the town. If we really do think it's vandalism, so I don't think that it would be, I don't think it would be far off at all for someone who's being a jerk and opening the dumpster to smash a game cam, or toss it in the brook.
So then what would, again, I don't wanna get too deep into it, but what would be, then what's the alternative?
I, I, I think, and I'm, by no means am I saying that this is the rule, but I think in terms of surveillance, that your primary goal needs to be deterrence with said surveillance. And so I think the only way to do that effectively is to uh, put in a constant surveillance camera that's linked to, um, I mean, it's really not that expensive these days to put in a camera that would be linked to the internet, and uh, you would have to put it on a pole that is, say, thirty feet in the air, so no one can, without a reasonable amount of difficulty, go smash it. Um, I, I think it has to be. If, if you wanna accomplish your goal of deterrence, it needs to be a formidable obstacle, and and so it has to be professional at that point.
Is there a reason that we couldn't put a game camera thirty feet in, on a pole?
Well, there, there's two reasons. One, the easiest one to overcome is game cameras aren't necessarily designed to be utilized in that manner. Uh, you could probably overcome it. They're more designed to be kind of at an active level. Um, yeah, it would, it would be weird to try to like, put it up there and, and strap it to some sort of apparatus to aim it properly. That would be really weird. And then the other problem is, how, uh, you know, how do you get up there physically to check it? Now, you don't have to physically check all the game cameras, you can have an internet link to them, but then they get more expensive, but you know, you have to get up there at some point, so are we uh, renting a, you know, a cherry picker, or this, or, you know, batteries have to be changed? It gets, at that point, the, the amount of labor that goes in to maintaining these things gets really kind of crazy.
Yep, which is, I'll be honest, which was initially what I was envisioning, and why I was, have always been so down on the mere idea of this. So, there aren't game cameras, or maybe there are, but they're a lot more expensive, that you can connect to via Bluetooth and, or Wi-Fi and download from the card without having to physically.
You certainly can. You certainly can, and they're not even that expensive. The thing is that you know, they don't last forever, so if you were gonna go with something like that and put it high enough so people don't steal it, you're gonna have to be getting up there relatively frequently to at least change the batteries or something, or you know, in lieu of that, you gotta get some sort of power source up there. I mean, it's not like you could just put a game camera up on a pole and only, and only go up to it once a year.
Well, and I suppose the higher we put, you'd put anything up on the pole, the more it's gonna capture, and therefore more things are gonna trigger it.
Yeah, I think, a- again, that's the pro, and I'm not an ex, an expert on all the, the hottest technology in game cams, but um, for the most part, the, the more reasonably priced ones aren't really made to, they're not made to be like a surveillance.
Yeah.
Like a, like a, you know, wide-scale surveillance piece. It's supposed to be on a tree and, you know, catch a rat or something, but.
Right, it's supposed to sporadically catch something, not be monitoring something constantly.
They're supposed to be really, pretty specifically aimed. It's not like it's, it's not like you're trying to do area surveillance with, with a game cam, per se.
Um, okay, all right, let's wrap this up. Um, thank you. I mean, I guess let's, everybody mulled this over some in the ensuing time, 'cause we're gonna have to come up with some estimate, basically, at the next meeting. Um, okay, um, then I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shelby. Uh, okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, all right, we are adjourned, and we'll call it nine-ten.